The February 25th meeting of the College School District Order Directors is called to order. Jim, I don't think you've ever given a pledge for us tonight.
I've done it last week.
Thank you. My fault.
You did a great job.
You did a great job.
Was I here?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Secretary of State's call to order.
Director Huntar.
Is that able to be here tonight?
Director O'Brien here. Director Sinsig here. Director Mendoza here. Director Zalinski here. Director Russo.
Here.
Director Apple.
Here.
Director Craig.
He's not able to be here tonight?
Director Shriver.
Here. At the beginning of our meeting, we have a section where members of the public can comment on items that are on our agenda for tonight. See, we have two people that signed up. Are you have an agenda questions for this evening?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, the one is number six. I just wondered what the determining factor was of whether or not we get to see the letter of resignation because we saw Mrs. Cudisows, but we weren't able to see Dr. Andlers and Ms. Detlings. I just wondered.
It might be clerical play or might be?
It's probably clerical. As far as the letters of resignation, you keep the letters that are written. Sometimes they include personal information. And as a result of that, we don't make those public, but just to put the letter down to indicate that we did receive a letter of intent.
Okay. The second one is on 616. If approving this, will that include checker boarding to get this position filled? If it will include checker boarding to get this position filled, would it not be better to not sign this and wait until the beginning of next school year after the contract has been negotiated and get it put in there the way we would want without moving teachers all around?
So the goal with the MOU is to keep students with their teachers for the remainder of this school year. So it keeps that piece intact. That's the spirit of the MOU. And so that any changes as far as bidding into positions, that would then have an impact on the 2021 school year as far as where teachers will be.
Okay, then I misunderstood it was. What it's saying is keep it the way it is until next year. I thought they were trying to fill it for next year right now. Okay? The next name was with 7.3. Well, I'm always happy to see new programs. I wanted to know if these new programs will require either new teachers or if we have teachers already in place for these new programs, these new courses, new curriculum? And will we have to pay to get the teacher certified to teach these new courses? And also do the grants cover the cost for all of the materials for these new courses? Or are we then going to have to put more money out for more materials because we keep talking about how we need to save money? So if you put up three new courses that we've got to pay for materials for all these, aren't we kind of like shooting ourselves in the foot?
So the coursework you're referring to, there's three new courses that are coming in. One is in robotics. The other two have to do with the content, social emotional learning strategies that are embedded in the curriculum. Mr. Mantich was, worked very collaboratively with several people.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, with the teachers we have in place, we have the shop upstairs. And what the two of them of the courses are is we're now tying the shop into the curriculum of the school district. So all the materials that we need for those particular programs are already sitting there. We just found a way to now to present the kids with a way inside the schedule to go ahead and utilize the materials and the learning from the shop. So that's two of those.
Okay.
And the robotics, we already have a robotics club already in place. We're just now building a program inside the curriculum of the school that now that is, I don't want to say it's going to feed the robotics club, it's going to teach kids robotics who may not be able to stay after school or to be able to utilize those kinds of things, the after school program. So it's going to work out.
So then we wouldn't need to hire new teachers? We wouldn't need to get people certified in it? And we already have all the materials?
Yeah, we had the teachers who are already written the curriculum that are going to be implemented within the classroom.
All right.
Thanks. The other person signed up, please?
So my question's also at 7.3 regarding the new curriculum. This is a question regarding the entrepreneurial innovations class. Have you guys read the curriculum that's put in that, the file that's associated with it on the board docs? Well, the curriculum associated with it doesn't actually have much to do with entrepreneurial innovations. Most of what it has to do is regarding using things in the shop. And I've read it, it's a good curriculum, but the name entrepreneurial innovation does not accurately explain what it is. And I feel like it should, we should change the name.
Maybe as a first year program, they'll assess that and kind of figure out what the, a better name might be over time. But good feedback.
What it is designed is it provides the basic foundational skills for students to learn and acquire the skills of the equipment that's in the shop. Use that in a manner to become entrepreneurs. And then the follow-up course, the second course that is a little bit more on the marketing side of things, once they develop their prototypes, once they develop different types of tools, that then they could take that, market it, put together a marketing plan, research plan to follow through. So the two are more or less in tandem with each other, first being more of a pre-representive to the second.
Well, the first one, as you read the curriculum, it mentions entrepreneurial stings in the first unit, but the rest of the units, they don't actually tie into marketing or anything. Not marketing, but other aspects of the entrepreneurial attitude, I guess. It's, the class is how do you use the vinyl cutter? How do you use software editing, audio editing? How do you do those things? And it's all good things. Don't get me wrong, it's a great class. I look forward to us having it, but I just think that it's inadequately named and misrepresents the course. Furthermore, part of the curriculum, it mentions that they're going to spend 10 days learning circuitry. And I mean, my critique with this is that you really aren't going to do, circuitry's a complex thing and you're not going to do anything of significant substance in 10 days. So I just, that's my word for that. And then regarding the robotics class, it's not going to remain separate from the robotics club or are, basically what I'm getting at here, the robotics club has their own equipment and robots. And I want to know if resources that belong to the robotics club make sure they aren't going towards this class.
Correct. Those two things are separate. There are monies allocated towards the curriculum and then for the robotics club, that all comes through activity funding.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just would like to compliment the administration for their work on this. You know, it was mentioned earlier about we're watching the money. And I think this is a great example of the fact that it's not just about not spending money, it's about spending the money we spend in a smart way. So kudos to the group trying to identify positive innovative things to go forward to be more representative of what education is in the 21st century. So I'd like to hear more about that.
Any other public comments on agenda items? If not, we'll move forward. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 28th, 2020 voting meeting. So moved by the second?
Second.
Moved the second, any discussion? If not the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I'll entertain a second motion to approve the minutes of the February 11th, 2020 Finance Committee meeting. If not the second?
Smooth.
Moved by the second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Executive session. I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed personnel matters. Dr. Crater, Superintendent reports?
Sure. Earlier this month, we had a fluid power challenge that was held here in the CCC that involved seventh and eighth grade students who were engaged in designing different types of thematic fluid power lifting types of equipment. Students were given a small challenge at the very beginning to replicate, and then they were also given a challenge to move forward with. They'll come back in March. It involves several students from Carlington and then also students from surrounding school districts to come and compete. That was also done with a corporate sponsor through Ojanis, which we greatly appreciate for their support. So we're looking forward to the challenge day coming back up, to swing back through and close that out. Athletics, winter athletics had a very successful season. All of our teams, boys basketball, girls basketball, swimming, wrestling, and then also our bowling teams were very successful. They all made it into postseason play. Boys basketball will continue in the state competition next week. Girls basketball will compete tomorrow night at West Allegheny at Eds versus Mohawk to continue in the semifinals of the Whipple Champions. We had 19 swimmers who will advance this Thursday and Friday to compete in Whipple's. And we had one wrestler who's a freshman, won Whipple's, which is a great accomplishment. They had one of the lower weight classes. And then boys bowling, they advanced to regional competition. We also had one of our female bowlers move on to regional individuals as well. So that was an exciting, very exciting winter season. We wish all of our teams the best of luck in the postseason. There are three upcoming nights that I advertised to get to know new incoming superintendents as part of my entry plan. We have a few of those dates remaining at Carnegie, March 5th. That's at 6:30. Then at Crafton at 7 o'clock. That's on March 11th. And then I'll be up here at the high school on March 24th, and that's at 7 o'clock. If there's any parents that can't make it to elementary nights earlier in the month, they're more than welcome to join us at any of those events. We have two really exciting events taking place in our elementary schools coming up in the spirit of family reading nights and reading across America. Crafton will be holding their reading night on February the 28th. That's at 6 o'clock. Teachers put together some really exciting activities for our kids. They'll have a scholastic book fair. They'll have some raffling, scavenger hunt, some crafts, some coding activities, a lot of really neat things to engage parents in with reading. And then to cap the night off at Crafton at 7:30, we have a STEAM presentation by Carnegie Science Center. March 6th is when Carnegie is sponsoring Thursday. Also have some exciting events for families as well. They have a scholastic book fair. Clifford, the big red dog, is coming, so he will be there. That'll be exciting. We have a treasure hunt. And then we have some of our high school students who are coming down to the elementaries to read to our students and also do some activities with them as well. So it's a really interesting and fun activities coming up for our families as well for the next month or so.
Turning to, is that which administrative reports as well? Okay. Committee reports, starting off with Parkway West. Director Apple, anything to share?
Yeah, on the 4th of February, we had a meeting. And some of the highlights from which are the results of the Skills USA District Competition, which kids from Parkway compete against seven other schools, career technology education centers in the area. We had two Carlington students take first place in their respective categories. Julianne Brooks in culinary arts action skills and Kira Hill in photography. They'll advance to the state competition in Hershey in April the 15th and the 17th. So that's a, it's a pretty big deal. Pretty stiff competition to move to the state competition is really, to be commended for that. We also had a second place won by Haley Boggs in graphic arts and T-shirt design. And on the 31st of January, Parkway had Career Exploration Day. Fifth and sixth graders from the schools in the jointure came to look at the different programs available at Parkway West. They had over 600 kids, so that's pretty, that's pretty great to hear. I mean, there's a lot of interest in Parkway West and career education. So that's great. And then coming up on 3rd of March will be the Open House, which is a big recruiting event. So if students would like to go up there and see what's going on, they should contact their guidance counselors and get you on the list. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Director Huntar's not here. I don't know, Dr. Crater, if there's anything about path funding or whatever, or will we just wait till next month?
Nothing that I was informed about that.
Okay. Shazda Kelly?
We actually haven't had our first one here yet. We will be going on Dr. Crater and myself on page 3 to South Park.
Yeah.
The first one.
Moving forward to the next one though? Thanks. Legislative PSBA, I think, yes. Director Drew, okay, so he's not here, we'll ask him next month. And then the liaison.
We have not met. We'll meet again next Tuesday, the 3rd. So that'll be our next meeting. But before then, we're going to have the prom fashion bash is coming Friday. It's a fundraiser, it'll be up in the shop. $7 admission ahead of time, well, pre-sale at $10 at the door. So we're hoping for a good turnout for that.
What's the date on that?
That's on the 28th, February 28th. It's coming Friday.
Excellent. Any comments or questions about the reports? We'll move on. Under Section 4 miscellaneous, I'll entertain a motion to approve four items. Number one, motion to approve the additions to the 2019-2020 Conference and Field Trip requests as submitted. Number two, motion to approve the resolution to recognize the Carlington Swim Booster Club as a school district organization. Recognition of the organization is necessary for the purposes of obtaining an appropriate license to enable the club to conduct and operate small games of chance. Number 4.3, motion to approve the resolution to authorize the electronic signature of Superintendent Dr. John Crater for all electronic agreements with Pennsylvania Department of Education. And number four, motion to nominate and approve School Board Director David Russo's as a trustee of the Western Region for the Allegheny County Schools Health Insurance Consortium for a two-year term effective March 30th, 2020. I have a motion for those four items. Moved by the second?
Second.
Moved the second, any discussion?
Jim, I have a question.
Yes.
On the small games of chance with the swim boosters, are all of our booster organizations recognized?
Question.
Throughout the whole district and?
Meeting if another group wants to do the same thing, they have figured through our processes.
So they're each done on individual?
I thought it was specific. I thought we had to do this before on each individual club basis. Like when there was a purse bingo, I thought that we had to do it for every event and it went with every organization.
Chris, do you know if it's a time-based thing or is games of chance?
I don't know if it's time-based, but it would be if the games of chance is sponsored by the school, so it's on an individual basis.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Under Section 5 Finance, I'll entertain a motion to approve the following six items. Number one, motion to approve the bill for the month of January 2020 in the amount of Number two, the motion to approve the treasures report for the month of November 2019 as submitted. Number three, to approve an independent audits report for the year ending June 30th, 2019, as submitted by Hosak, Beck, Insel, and Wood LLP. Number four, to approve and renew the cyber services agreement between the district and Seneca Valley School District effective February 3rd, 2020 for the school years of 2021, 2122, 2223, and 2425 as submitted. Were we missing one in there? 2324? So we can, I assume we should modify that to include that 20. So I'll reread it. Motion to approve the cyber services agreement to the district in Seneca Valley effective February 3rd for the school years of 2021, 2122, 2223, 2324, and 2425 as submitted and as modified. Do I have a motion for that, for that item?
It does say it is correct in the document itself.
Is it? Okay.
It is through 2425.
Through 2425, okay. So let me pause there. I don't, why don't we have a motion for those four items? And we'll close it off. So motion for those four items?
Smooth.
Moved by the second?
Second.
Moved the second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Can I provide clarification? The motion on Seneca Valley included the year 2324 to reflect what is actually happening?
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve items five and six. Number five, the athletic fund report with an ending balance of $13,601.61. And number six, the January 2020 Activities Fund Report with an ending balance of $86,484.49. I have a motion for those two items.
Smooth.
Moved by the second?
Second.
Moved the second, any discussion? If not the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Under Section 6 Personnel, let's split it up, 1 through 8. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the following items. Number one, motion to approve and accept the letter of resignation of Dr. Rachel Andler, Director of Special Education and Pupil Services, effective March 27th, 2020. Number two, motion to approve and accept the letter of resignation of Junior Senior High School Assistant Principal Rachel Letusso, effective on or before May 1st, 2020. Number three, motion to approve the letter of intent to retire as submitted by Confidential Administrative Secretary Katherine Kovak, effective June 30th, 2020. Number four, motion to approve the letter of resignation of Teacher Megan Detling, effective February 11th, 2020. Number five, motion to approve the letter of intent to retire Elementary Paraprofessional Nancy McMullin, effective the last day of the 2019-2020 school year. Number six, motion to approve the letter of intent to retire General Cafeteria Worker Maria Apicella, effective May 29th, 2020. Number seven, motion to approve a $2,500 salary adjustment for Confidential Payroll Secretary Renee Sales, retroactive to July 1st, 2019. Number eight, motion to award excitement of $1,500 to Christopher Jeswick for his service in the role of acting superintendent for a period of time in the 2019-2020 school year. I have a motion for those eight items. Moved by the second?
Second.
Moved the second, any discussion?
Sorry to see you go. Rachel, Rachel, everybody else?
There's no other questions or comments, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Yes. Sorry to see all of these fine folks leave. I'll entertain a motion to approve numbers nine through 16. Number nine, motion to approve the professional employee contractor teacher Bethany Mudd for completing three years of satisfactory service with the district per the terms of the College Confederation Teachers Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number 10, motion to approve the professional employee contractor for school psychologist Rebecca Brethley for completing three years of satisfactory service with the district per the terms of the CFT Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number 11, motion to approve Jane, to employ Jane Corral as a paraprofessional at the Junior Senior High School, effective February 26th, 2020, per the terms of the SCA Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number 12, motion to approve elementary teachers Andrea Harity, Brian Harowitz, and Lindsay Berdowski for the positions of math, reading, and writing respectively for the summer academic program to be held at Carnegie Elementary, June 22nd through July 17th, 2020, at the teachers' per diem rate and per the terms of the Carlington Federation Teachers Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number 13, motion to approve Kathleen Watson for the temporary position of Office Secretary in the Junior Senior High School for the period beginning February 21st through March 9th, 2020, consistent with the terms of the SCA Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number 14, motion to approve the leave of absence submitted by employee number CFT Number 15, motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the district and the Carlington Federation of Teachers Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement for the provision of an early retirement incentive plan and retirement severance as submitted. And then number 16, motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the district and the Carlington Federation of Teachers Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement related to an unexpected vacancy at the elementary level as submitted. I have a motion for those items nine through 16.
Smooth.
Moved by the second?
Second.
Moved the second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Section 7 Student Services, I'll entertain a motion to approve the following four items. Number one, motion to approve a proposal for the organization of the Dromon Club at the Junior Senior High School as presented. Number two, motion to approve and renew the agreement for the Certified Instructor of Kennedy School of Driving, which provides driving lessons and end of course skills tests to eligible students in the district. Number three, motion to approve the 2020-2021 Program of Students for Grades 9 through 12, inclusion of three additional courses as submitted. I think that's a program of studies for students, grades 9 through 12. And then also number four, motion to approve the 2021 Program of Studies for Students in Grades 7 and 8 as submitted. I have a motion for those four items.
Smooth.
Moved by the second?
Second.
Moved the second, any discussion?
I'll just note that I think we all received an email from Mr. Mantich. There had been some, apparently some error putting a document on board docs. It showed one of the, what was it? You were telling me that one of the programs was 1920. He would actually prepare it for us.
Yes, I prepared it for us.
I think he emailed us all. I'm like, they corrected documents. That would be the document that we're voting on. 21 that was emailed, so that's his form of catch-up.
So if it wasn't correct on the website, we'll change it and issue something.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Old business, any director of any old business that would like to bring up? Seeing new business, any new business for any director?
I do. I, I was sat in this afternoon on a webinar. It was district and community, the healthy social media relationships. Because I'm really interested in how we can improve our communication with the community. And so this came up, I saw it at PSBA and decided to sit in on the webinar. And they talked a lot about how the district can use social media because that's really the platform where a lot of the community is using. Rather than going to the website, people use Facebook a lot or they use Twitter a lot. So, you know, there was just some really helpful information on how other districts are using social media. And I think it'd be a really good thing for us to talk about and explore. The district that was highlighted in the webinar was a smaller district. It was two campuses. And they said they just started with just Facebook and Twitter. You know, and the challenges are managing the content and the time that you have to put into it. But, you know, they found the rewards far outweighed what the risks were in using social media to communicate with the community. So, you know, I thought that's something for us to talk about and think a lot in school.
Did they provide some PowerPoint?
They did, and they said they would send that out afterward. I didn't get the follow-up, and once I do, I'll be sure to share that. They talked about a book that they thought was very helpful. It was called Social Media by an author, her name was Jennifer Casa Todd, and I'll share that with everybody as well. They said they're using it for live streaming events a lot, and they're preferring Facebook live streaming over YouTube because people have easier access through Facebook. And people are using Facebook more so than YouTube. So that was something I thought was interesting. Things that you have to pay attention to with archiving and making sure that you're keeping your, you have these documents archived because it is public records. You know, we're posting things out there. So they talked about that, and they talked about ways to archive and ways to capture that data. So. Another thing is that you have to stay current. So, you know, a lot of people are using Facebook, but that might migrate to another platform sometimes. You do have to stay current. They also asked the attendees if anybody was, had a social media class or if they were using students to implement a social media program, and some of them were. So I'd be interested, and they didn't go in detail. Some people just reported that yes, they were doing that. So I'd be really interested in seeing other districts that are using this, having a class and having students help them with that social media presence. Because, you know, I really think that's something that could be valuable to our district.
Agreed. And you'll send that out then whenever?
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll send some out to everybody.
District does have a new Twitter account. It's at @CarlingtonSchoolDistrict. And it's active, I think it has maybe 12, 14 followers. So we're growing, we're getting there. One of the pieces we considered doing was taking the Twitter feed and then also embedding it into our webpage, so that all the tweets would also go to the webpage. So people don't necessarily have to have a Twitter account in order to follow any of the, any of the upcoming events and those kinds of things that are tweeted out. And I think that's important for some parents also who don't want their children on social And I think that's important for some parents also who don't want their children on social media, that they can still at least have access to some of the information that's put out there via social media.
Any other open forum files for the board?
New business?
New business files for the board? Any open forum questions or comments from the audience?
Is there an update on the status of the playground at Crafton Elementary School? With the weather breaking, kids wanting to get out there, and it's locked every weekend.
So that occurred before Dr. Kreider's presence? We had some vandalism occur in one of the playgrounds, and I don't know if you're aware of the situation?
And so I know that we did go through, we locked up the playground just out of two components to that. One was just safety and security of individuals coming on without supervision. And then also just vandalism to the property as well. And Dennis, I'm not sure if you have any, is that an area that we discussed at all? I know we discussed the improvements.
The improvements, the safety concerns, you keep it locked. They were climbing up on a canopy, jumping down onto the playground equipment. They broke the slide that was there. So we ordered a new slide for the playground. And looking to reopening it in the summertime. We are gonna pay for parking lot this summer because the area there needs to be updated. And so then we'll look into opening it back up.
Any timeline on that?
I think we'll get together as a team.
There hasn't been an established timeline on that.
Well, hey Dennis or Chris, how much in terms of dollars was the damage?
The slide was $3,000.
$100 bucks.
Yeah, I think we've been leaving, don't we leave it up until dusk anyways? The custodial comes and locks it off?
Yeah, they lock it up after the day, yeah.
Yeah, so it's still open for a while.
Long-term, we all think it's a great asset, we want to share with the community. We just, the administration improved with safety and?
Yeah, there's just, there's no information as to what may be considered. This is the first, I think anyone's heard about it, so that's positive.
The letter went home to parents as to why it was locked among a letter, yeah, it was posted.
Why it was locked, but then the question was, well, it's under video surveillance, so why weren't the kids who did the vandalism following that?
So I think other than the fact that they could tell they were children, they couldn't tell it was that child.
Any other open forum questions? Any board members have any open forum questions? Reese, any interest in adjournment?
So moved, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.